Good evening and welcome to our Lebanon City Council meeting Tuesday, December 10th, 2019. Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer?
Here.
Mrs. Monroe?
Here.
Ms. Wyatt?
Here.
Mr. Shoep?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
Please stand for our color guard.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Eric, holders, colors, colors, er, perch.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening as humble servants of our community. We're grateful to be able to live in the wonderful town of Lebanon. We ask that you protect all of the serve our city, all departments, protection especially for fire, police, and our utility workers that are outside this time of year. We're grateful for the dedication and hard work that all of us put in, including our staff, to make our city function properly. Pray that you put your guiding hand upon us as we make decisions this evening and ask that you watch over our military to keep us safe throughout the country. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right, and this is opportunity for our new council members. It's their first official voting meeting, so we welcome you. And I'll first start out with consideration of work session, meeting minutes, November 6th, 2019, and I will entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Shoep?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
In consideration of regular meeting minutes, November 26th, 2019, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
All right, moving on to previous business, we'll start out with number one, ordinance number 2019-099.
Order number 2019-099 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Sutfin fire engine from the Sutfin Corporation.
Mr. Brunka?
This legislation will approve the purchase of a Sutfin fire engine from the Sutfin Corporation in the amount of $603,000 as outlined in the 2020 operating budget to replace an existing fire engine that has reached the end of its useful life.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment?
I just want to compliment Chief Johnson on once again finding a demo. These trucks are in very good condition and save us a lot of money, yet they're going to function just as well as a new one.
What was the cost savings on that?
I can't remember. I'm going to say about 200 maybe.
Yeah, we didn't, it kind of depends on how they're outfitted, but it's a significant cost savings if you look at new versus demo.
And this one comes-
So I know the latter truck was a couple hundred.
But this one comes equipped, so this is a deal that we have yet, I've never seen this happen. So this is an awesome deal.
Great, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Number two, ordinance number 2019-100.
Order number 2019-100 is an ordinance of the city of Lebanon, Ohio approving an amendment to the official zoning map thereof to 5.42 acres of property located at 1831 West Main Street, parcel numbers 121, 110, 003, 41, 121, 110, 003, 42, and 121, 110, 003, 50 from rural residential or R-R and public institutional P1 to general commercial or G.C.
Mr. Brunka?
This legislation will approve a zoning map amendment to rezone parcels number 12111000341, 12111000342, and 12111000350, all located at 1831 West Main Street, referred to as a Cardinal Landscaping parcels, from rural residential and public institutional to general commercial, and this has been recommended by the, by the planning commission.
All right, first I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. All right, and I know we have the bankers here this evening that would like to speak, so we do have a motion in a second, and I know some council members may want to speak to the issue, but we'll have you come to the microphone if you would, state your name and address for the record and your comments.
Yeah, Terry and Jim Baker, 619 McClure Road, Lebanon, Ohio. We're the property owners of 1899 West State Route 63, which is adjacent to Cardinal Landscaping. We are in the township on the other side of Molford's Run. Jim and I are here tonight because we just wanted the council to be aware that there has been a lot of problems with this property, both environmentally and in adherence to the county resolution for the rezoning in 2010. We feel that almost every section of that resolution has been, has not been complied with, except for one, and we just want to make sure that you have some information in this thing going forward. So I'm just going to, I'm sorry, don't have-
Well, Terry's passing this out, I think we want to make it clear, we don't dispute the zoning change. That's not an issue. They're fine with them, you know, going to commercial there. It's that the previous resolution, the letter and spirit of that has not been looked up to, come down and take a look at the property, that the creekside, a lot of stuff is in the floodplain, and it is not in compliance with the county resolution. We're concerned that it's going to get even worse as it grows.
We have a big investment at Valley View Farm, and that farm, we have a lot of drainage that comes through that farm, and it, and it filters a lot of the water going into the aquifer protection area, and we just want to make sure that we finally come to some resolution. We're concerned that if the Cardinal decides not to develop, that we'll kind of be left with no regulations at all, because those regulations are attached to a site plan. If the site plan is never done, then I don't, we don't really know exactly where we stand. So again, there's floodway issues, floodplain issues, in fact, the property that you're rezoning is entirely, entirely in the floodway and floodplain. So the groundwater protection area, you can see that from the O-dot maps, I'm not even sure that there's even proper septic on that property. So these are just some issues that I think the council should be aware of, and we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and if I could just point out, so I know staff met with the bankers about two weeks ago to kind of go over their concerns in detail. A lot of the concerns are really part of the site plan, submittal and review process, which at this point was before city councils, a rezoning request with a concept plan. Obviously, moving forward to that next step in the, in the improvements and the development require more detailed engineering studies, design, so on and so forth, and certainly-
Will come through planning.
It'll come through planning commission, and certainly, you know, we'll be working with both parties as we go through that. You know, Cardinal Landscaping, you know, their desire and interest to purchase a city-owned property was really driven by, you know, not giving them the ability to expand away from the creek and kind of move some of that parking to the other side of the building. So we'll continue to work with both parties as we move forward.
All right, great, thank you. Comments?
I know a little bit about this business here. For Tony and Cardinal Landscaping, just thank you guys for choosing Lebanon as home for your business, and to the board. Cardinal Landscaping is a veteran-owned company who works locally and hires locally, has a great reputation, and they stand behind their work. I'd like to highlight that they also give back to the community through sponsoring sports teams and forage kids, animals. They give money to the YMCA, the gala, girls night out here in town, just very community-driven. They're located at one of the gateways to the city, and it's kind of a known thing that they want to kind of dress up the front of this property, really make it look nice with landscaping and trees and, and nice parking, eventually have all of their equipment and material handling in the rear of the building, out of sight, and I'm excited to see their plans come together and wish the best for Cardinal Landscaping as they continue to grow their business in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
So just, just so I understand, your main concern is that currently this resolution is not being complied with, to your knowledge?
Do you want me to punch to the-
Oh, you can, you can. And that you're, you're saying that if, if they don't move forward on a site plan, you, you don't want this to continue?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess you're another one of them. Whatever you approve has to incorporate what should have been already incorporated from 2010, and none of it, other than the signage, I believe, has been complied with.
And so we're concerned about, you know, when you have past history, and there is a lot of history, you know, is that going to, is that indicative of what's to come?
We just, we just need them to, whatever is past, they need to comply with what the county has plus whatever the city puts on for the site.
Yeah, I think that-
And we have submitted, I, or, Mr. Brunka, we have, you know, to give you some pictures of it, and then you're going to come out and see the site, but there are some serious concerns relative to where the property is, where it winds up on the creek. It's the, it's the eastern gateway to the city. I think everybody wants it to look nice. We've got a vested interest in it because of the property we have adjacent to it, but I think you all have a vested interest as well. But look, I would think Cardinal will have vested interests as well, the landscaping company, it should look good. It shouldn't be a bunch of dumped concrete and bricks and cinder blocks trying to stabilize creek bank.
Well, and FEMA also has already, has already called the, the FEMA representatives for both the county and the city in July, saying that they need to make some adjustments there, and it has yet to been done, and the county, I, you wanted to go out and do something, but I, I said, well, let's wait and see what the city does, you know, because they're kind of in the middle of, you know, of this. But it's very upsetting because, you know, I mean, it can put your flood insurance at risk if, when the floodway is encroached upon, and that's one reason tomorrow, and Scott's been wonderful about following up with us and everything, and tomorrow we're going out with the Apex, and that's why it's so important that the floodway be staked, so that everybody knows exactly, you know, where that demarcation line is. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, this is our first step, so, and we have a great staff, and we've worked with, I've worked with Scott a couple different times on site plans, and he does a great job, and I think moving forward, I think he'll be satisfied with, with how the property-
I, I think so too.
Move forward within the city limits.
We just wanted to make sure that everyone on council was aware, because, you know, sometimes it's hard to communicate with everybody, and so we appreciate the time.
Yeah.
Thanks. Here's what I would say. Cardinal Landscaping has done a great job communicating with the city, and there are many steps that have to be followed. You have to get through one step before you can do something else, before you can get to do something else, it's sort of on planning commission. It will come through planning, and I do believe with great staff, great planning commission, and knowing Cardinal, this has been a long process. Knowing Cardinal, I know they do the right thing, but it's step by step. Yes, there can be anxiety and their fears, and I will not at all discount what you're saying, but I do believe when it's all said and done, Cardinal do, will do a great job because it's a commitment, they've, they've come into the city, they're going to be, they're going to apply with our regulations. Our regulations, our city regulations is what they need to comply with. That is what our focus is going to be, and I have no doubt the Cardinal Landscaping will not adhere to and follow those rules and regulations. They know that coming in, they know that coming in. If you want to be a part of the city, this is what you have to do. I believe Cardinal Landscaping will do the right thing, so. Anyone else? Thank you, and thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-103.
Order number 2019-103 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Innovative Software Solutions Incorporated.
Mr. Brunka?
This legislation will approve an agreement with Innovative Software Services in the amount of $77,479 for tax division software.
A motion for a first reading.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, discussion or comment? I wanted to say, Scott, that there are many times when we have, when city has projects, county has projects, there is the collaboration and working together so that if we do something like this, the county, the county will do that for us in terms of projects that we have. So it's important to see that it goes both ways.
I was just wondering if you were describing quid pro quo. Joke.
Anything else?
No, I, I would just like to say, kind of piggyback on that, that it is important for us to maintain good working relationships with the municipalities, and of course, we're the county seat, and the county is a big, big part, you know, we not only represent the city, but in some ways we represent, you know, everyone in the county, and I think this is a good thing, reciprocal-
Yeah.
Cooperation, so.
All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-103.
Order number 2019-103 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Innovative Software Solutions Incorporated.
Mr. Brunka?
This legislation will approve an agreement with Innovative Software Services in the amount of $77,479 for tax division software.
A motion for a first reading.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and we will see this at our next meeting. Number three, resolution number 2019-104.
Resolution number 2019-104 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for the FY 2020 Warren County Community Development Block Grant.
Mr. Brunka?
This legislation will authorize a city manager to submit a fiscal year 2020 Community Development Block Grant or CDBG application in the amount of $275,000 to support the Summit Street Highland Avenue Reconstruction Project, which is programmed for next year.
Ms. Wyatt, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion, and caveat that it's, this has been on the books for a long time.
There we go, I thought maybe you would like to do that. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Second.
A discussion or comment?
And it is not because I live there.
Obviously.
That was, that's been bad since I was in high school.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-105.
That's, I think, our second to the last.
Oh, we have one more. There we go.
But we're, we're definitely short time for this year, Mayor, you're absolutely ready on that. Order number 2019-105, an ordinance to approve the record plan for the final plat of Yager and Hathaway Edition New Freedom Church revision subdivision and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka?
This legislation will approve the final plat for the Yager and Hathaway Edition New Freedom Church subdivision as approved by planning commission.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
All right, now our last piece of legislation. Ordinance number 2019-106.
Order number 2019-106, an ordinance to approve the record plan for the final plat of Lebanon Commerce Center Section 16 subdivision and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka?
This legislation will approve the final plat for Lebanon Commerce Center Section 16 subdivision as approved by planning commission.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And city managers report.
Thank you, Mary. Just with this being the, the last meeting of the year, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Great, thank you. So discussion items, this is an opportunity at the end, if you have anything additional that you'd like to say, go around if you don't have anything to say, and that's, that is fine too. So council member Shoep, anything this evening?
Just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a joyous new year, and pray God's blessings on our city in this new year that's coming up through this holiday season. Everybody be safe.
Thank you.
Well, it looks like a very great turnout for Saturday's festival and carriage parade. It was, it was really nice, the weather cooperated this year.
Thank you.
And again, happy, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas to those that celebrate such.
Council Schaefer?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out, getting input. Are we allowed to hang on to these? Okay, thank you. And then the rest of the city, thank you again, and Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year.
Vice Mayor, Messer?
So I normally spend my mornings drinking coffee and reading quotations and papers from the founders, different things like that, and I found this quote by Benjamin Franklin, and I, it's kind of how I've been perceiving the, the season. It says, "How many observe Christ's birthday, how few his precepts." And I've kind of let that, that weigh on me over this past month, and without getting into a bunch of theology, I'll just pray that people in our community and our board members also experience true faith, hope, and love, and I just want to thank everybody for another great year and look forward to working with you in the new year. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
As we approach Christmas, as we finish this year, we are in a joyful waiting season. It's great to see so many people out in Lebanon at the horse parade. Both the afternoon and the evening were well attended, I saw our shops bustling, and it's great for all of us to be here in our communities and our families to provide that strength to the civic organizations that we spend time in. As we're in this Advent time, as we're in this time of, the darkness is coming, but we'll get to Christmas shortly and this new year for a new time. I echo the sentiments, the statements of the other members that bringing this light, bringing this life into our lives and celebrating a Merry Christmas with all of our families and here in town in Lebanon.
Thank you. Councilmember Monroe?
I just want to also say it was great that everything went so well on Saturday at the parade, and Scott and the rest of the city staff did such a good job. There's definitely, I noticed a couple years ago, it's sort of a change in some of the planning and the roads and the, with the detour signs and whatnot, and it really made a difference, and I, it wasn't just a fluke, I can see, I continue to see that it really was an improvement over some times, because, and it's, I mean, it's hard when you have that many people just come into the city that's not made for that many people, but I mean, you know, all, you know, all things accounted for, it really works pretty well. So thank you for all the planning that you do, it seems, it seems, you make it look easy, and it seems very organized, and I appreciate you and your staff and everything that they do to, to help it to be as smooth as possible. So thank you.
Yeah, I just like to point out, we have great staff working on it, so.
It's a lot of people, and I know there's a lot of volunteers too, that, a lot of volunteers that day of and the day before, so it's definitely a citywide team effort, but you're a big part of that, so thank you, and thank your staff, your key staff that you lean on as well for that. It's noticeable, so it does get noticed.
Thank you, and I'd like to wish all of you and the community of Lebanon a very Merry Christmas, and all the wonderful traditions that each and every one of you in our community celebrates, and they are varied. But I also have to, as we, we think, and as the ROTC stood before us, my thoughts and prayers to all of them as they're, one of their leaders, their, their person is struggling in her health, and so many prayers to her and her family and the school community for time I believe is approaching. Also, the awareness of just recently, within the past two days, younger people that have, that have passed away, so when you think of the holiday season, the importance of the holiday season, really the importance of those that struggle, those that are in pain, as we celebrate, we lift them up in love and prayers and heartfelt feelings, because there are people that are, that are struggling out there, so.
Would you indulge me for just-
Yeah.
-one moment? I don't, I don't mean to-
No.
I just wanted to point out for people here and for watching at home, something that I'm, I was touched by.
Mm-hmm.
It really doesn't have much to do with the law, but-
Go ahead.
Our, you know, we have a giving tree downstairs, and some of the city employees donate their time, but they don't donate all the gifts. People in need will make requests and literally run out of requests, and the entire community buys Christmas gifts primarily for younger people that otherwise might not get a lot of Christmas gifts, and I think it's important, it's easy to follow the news and get discouraged about the, the state of human affairs, but at least in, in Lebanon, there is a generosity and a willingness to help people that need help that is really amazing and very humbling.
And I think that's, that's such a good point that you bring up, that at least I believe in Lebanon, I mean, we have a very strong spiritual church community, and there's so many, there's so many wonderful, good people out there. so many, there's so many wonderful, good people out there, and if you stay off, if you don't watch the news, then you just feel the people around you and the, the goodness around you as when you walk in, I don't believe there's even a tag on that tree.
They ran out.
They're gone, there's no more tags on that tree, which is a wonderful thing, somebody has taken them, that we have a great caring community, and let us have awareness of all that and those, that love and those thoughts and those prayers to lift everyone up, because everyone is experiencing something. They may not say it, you may not see it, they may not show it, but it is there, so saying that, Merry Christmas, Blessed Christmas, and we'll see everybody in the new year. So that concludes our meeting for Tuesday, December 10, 2019. We'll see you in 2020. Have a good evening.